Yeah, buried my brother in law yesterday.
You what?
Buried my brother in law.
Who's that?
Beverly.
Yeah?
Her.
Well, she's, she wants to make it there, but won't.
Oh, no.
All right, let's start with the May 2019 financial reports as well as April. Christine, Rachel, first.
I don't think we have. I gave my company.
He was back. He's got a new server. I think it was the two questions we saw had on last time was the link was immediately to the payout and filled it up in that. And then his check was actually taken out of, which was transferred to the right account.
I'll make a motion to accept the April ones. It was just a couple of questions that Will had that, that we had to. A valid answer.
Jennifer can clear up this meeting.
I want to talk about it.
All right, there's been motions or a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of approval of April minutes? All opposed? Motion passed. All right, now if you'll take a quick look at May. Are there any questions? I will entertain the motion to approve the May financials.
May minutes?
On financials for May.
We've got a lot of payroll expenses last month. Well, I had a figure, we spent thirty-two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. An extra payroll last month. Not counting Jimmy in.
Jimmy Hearn, Jim?
Huh?
Hearn.
No, not counting you and, uh, Cox. Is the only ones I didn't count. Jimmy Hearn, Jordan, and Leanne. With thirty-two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars in Jordan.
And you don't, Leanne got her hours raised, Jordan got his hours raised.
Him to put to twenty hours a week was right. So, the way I had it figured.
Um, then you say, I'm sorry, didn't you say though, if he got paid twenty hours a week, they would put on, uh, the retirement plan?
If he gets over so many hours a month, he's gonna have to go into retirement going in.
What is it, anything over ninety-nine? So, twenty hours a week? We'd be pushing it on five weeks a month.
He's averaging, what, twenty-five a week?
Nineteen and a half hours. That'd keep you longer. That's, that's you going to pay your retirement, isn't that too?
Which matter, Hoss, please? Why should they hate him?
If he works twenty hours a week, it's only eighty hours a month. The threshold's one hundred.
Yeah, I mean, he's averaging, I mean, twenty, twenty-five.
So, is he getting over the ninety-nine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Not yet.
But with Leanne's checks on here?
Mm-hmm.
She got two checks, so twice a month. It was a thousand fifty-one oh two, and she got twenty hours a week. That's thirteen dollars an hour, averages thirteen dollars an hour, and we're only working on a ten.
Yeah, so it's ten.
So.
I'll, I'll pull up her time sheet for you.
Okay. And Joe's got a hundred and ninety dollars worth of mileage. You got mileage sheets, just, I guess, on what all that's for?
Yes, I turned her bit of it in, she didn't give it to me. She has to have it before she can print out the checks.
Is it fifty-eight cents a mile, or fifty?
Fifty-eight.
Probably less than that. They, they adjust that. To what, every three months or something?
No. I don't know how, can they adjust it?
Miles?
It was point fifty-three.
What is?
Until this year.
Is Jimmy's check gonna be split as?
You'll see, you'll see in, in next month for this month.
Okay, good. I was saying, the sewer, man, they do it.
I think they just do it once a year.
Really?
I think it twice a year. You can read it, Dan.
No, last time they, we got through TLC and they showed.
That's what this is? That's what she goes by, 'cause we, we did look it up a while back and it's.
Yeah, I, I was thinking they adjusted it every so, so often. I can't remember how.
The reason I said that is because this state starts out and says the mileage reimbursement rates for 2019 RAS follows. So, I assume it's just once a year.
And is some of that those Kipta meetings that you guys?
Uh, yes, some of the Kipta meetings. I had to go to, uh, an actual TLC training event. I've had to go to Frankfurt, or did a meeting with DLG over the sewer expansion. I mean, it's, there've been several pretty long trips. I haven't had to go to Lexington yet, but I've had a couple of meetings actually in Frankfurt. And Kipta, and stuff like that.
What are the code enforcement reimbursements?
What's that?
First page. Check number twenty-five eighty-nine.
Guess. Was it seventy-two fifty?
No, twenty-five eighty-nine, the check was four.
That's my guess.
Two sixty-four thirty-eight.
Code enforcement reimbursement.
That's what it says.
But it's a.
Uh, right here. Jimmy Hearn, code enforcement reimbursement, two sixty-four thirty-eight.
Was that mileage?
Not that I shouldn't do. You did it by paycheck and my mileage together.
Yeah, this was just for twenty. I'll have to pull it and look and see.
And also, the last check, twenty-five sixty-two and twenty-six oh one, were written the same day for the same amount. To Jimmy.
Right here.
I see.
Right here.
Right at the box.
One seventeen ninety, one seventeen ninety.
Code enforcement, and then miles, and then code enforcement.
I think I can see if that was a mistake or something, 'cause it's, yeah, it's the same day, two different checks.
Well, I mean, Jimmy knows he got it.
I've only got two reimbursements on mileage twice since I've been here. But I went thirty days, first time in a year, and I haven't earned any more than thirty days yet.
Well, this one says payroll.
How much is it?
One seventeen ninety.
One seventeen?
Yes, sir.
That is probably right. That's payroll.
Yeah, I've been showing two different check numbers on the same day for the same amount.
Yeah.
Uh, I only have one more.
Yeah, one seventeen ninety, and then, on the same day, one seventeen ninety.
That has to be something, something I never got.
Thirty-first, thirty.
It's gotta be a mistake or something.
Stake, right. Is there a flat rate ever set for that, or just according to what you go?
My pay.
Are we setting up a flat rate here for you, or just you?
For what?
For what, your travel?
I get the same mileage as everybody else. I get fifty-eight cents a mile.
Okay.
And some days I get ten miles, some days I get fifty.
Okay, then what do you allow a certain flat rate a month or what?
On this next one, I turn it in, I turn it in thirty miles. We're going to pick up a week here in Carroll.
Okay.
And blow them six. And I get called out to help the sewer at night, stuff like that, and weekends when I cover for them. That's where I leave my extra hours. And I've been called out four times the last two weeks for a code, code enforcement.
Okay. I didn't know, my guess.
You know, you only give it ten hours, but it's getting to the point where you call me out, want me to come out and look stuff, and things like that. You know, I don't know what else to do. I can't keep it this long. Because right now, I would hope solid week, better fifty hours, or then, right at fourteen hours.
Yeah, but you drive through Bedford, it don't take an hour to drive through Bedford.
No.
And look.
No.
No.
I mean.
But I saw a lot of lessons by looking at it.
Nothing against you, buddy. Nothing against you.
About speed, isn't it?
No, once you drive through, you give that order, you don't have to go back for seven days. You don't have to go and monitor the progress.
You don't have to monitor the progress?
The progress. You know, once you get back, you gotta do it. You don't have to go back for seven days. And then it's ahead of you. Give them their citation and be done.
That's for five thirty-four, one seventeen ninety, check two-sixty-one, five thirty-nine, check two-five-six-two, it was the same, one thirty, seven seventeen ninety.
So, does all Jimmy Hearn's, uh, come out of the general and none of it out of the sewer?
Yeah, 'cause it's only like four hours of sewer. I mean, I can track down the four hours.
And all of Jordan's come out of the sewer?
Yes.
All of Jordan's?
Yeah.
Only Jimmy?
That's the, right, that's the way I figured, yeah.
I will entertain the motion to approve minutes if there are no more questions.
Financial, who's second on financials?
I got, I got a question. What you saying, how do you want me to do this on my side, before we go in court? About you.
Maybe mileage?
Yeah, what you talking about?
I didn't say them to mileage.
What do you, what do you, what do you, what do you interpret?
I'm just saying, if you go up there, you say you gotta get this grass, it's seven days. You don't go for every day, you monitor it.
Why?
That's all I was saying. You know, I mean, you know, I've gotta monitor them, they in charge, the city, because you wait seven days, go back, but ain't done, write a ticket, and you're gone.
So, I might just say it all by day's week, and go out one half a month?
Well, I mean, dude.
Joe, uh, I'll come by tomorrow, collect what's owed to me. I will try and ask you right now.
You're kidding me.
No, sir.
Because of what I said?
Everybody thinks this is just a simple, easy job.
It's not a simple, I know, and you do a good job. But I've told you before, devil. I mean, if you abusing, it's not gonna work.
Abusing?
I don't wanna see it.
All right. Yo, I don't, I see it.
Well, I got any?
Questions on this one?
I'll do this one.
Questions? All right, can I get a second on the financials for May?
I'll second.
All in favor of approval? All opposed? All right.
Who's on this one?
No, I didn't either. I just asked him, because that was a double, I didn't.
All right, now we move on to the May minutes, the meeting minutes. I want to say something about that cemetery. David done a way over job.
Yeah, he did.
In the morning. We, that looked great. I want to tell them, say, I'm a really good guy.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
Great job.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from May?
May motion.
And you want one second?
I'll second.
All in favor of approval? All opposed? All right, now we move on to commissioner reports, and we will start with, uh, Ms. Tammy Ladder Scott.
Harold brought to my attention that there's an ash tree on the backside behind where, uh, the gazebo is, that lawn there. On the other side of the fence, there's a dead tree on that person's property, and, uh, Harold was thinking that it may fall on the stones. I don't know who lives in that property to you, there behind the cemetery?
Well, Chandler's really up front of house, I've heard from him. John Chandler.
But it's on their property, so.
It's who bones to that property, though.
It's not ours to take down, so I don't know what we can do about that right now.
Is it leaning over?
No, it's just dead.
It's a ash tree, it's dead, and they know it's gonna fall within years' time. And, uh, it's gonna, it could fall on us, you know.
Wait and take care of it after, in fact.
Yeah.
'Cause we can't go on their property and cut it unless, maybe we talk to them and ask them if we can get permission to do it. But as far as it being on their property, you can't touch it.
I might say something to Debbie Chandler on that, of course, uh, she's a good friend, so she might, they might.
First, ask them if you want them to take it down.
It could fall on us, and it could cause a lot of damage, uh, stones over there, 'cause it's five or six.
It may be worth their while to go ahead and take it down before something like that happens.
Yeah, if five, six of our stones, it could damage.
And we had any luck on the light out of the?
Yeah, we get that dark one.
And I guess it's a muddy mess?
Always, bye.
Everything's a muddy mess.
Yeah.
You have anything else to report, Tammy?
No, I don't think so. I think that's it.
All right, let's move to streets and sidewalks, Mr. Will McCoy.
Uh, Jimmy told me he's been working on some potholes. Other than that, it's just been raining, and it's gonna get worse.
Now, I did notice back there on West Street, there were some holes that had gravel in them, and when I went back through there, so much rain has washed the gravel out of the potholes in the middle of the road.
That's more than.
Okay.
Until later. These holes repaired, later in my time, and now it's, uh.
I was talking to Tammy about sidewalk, about on this side of her, this all tore up, one portion of it needs to be replaced.
But that's in the ordinance. We'll do that when we get the money.
Whenever that comes.
Which, yeah.
Uh, any other thing that you need to discuss, Will, as far as streets and sidewalks? All right, and we'll move on to sanitation, Mr. Harold Green.
Yeah, I talked to the man this morning, drives a truck. Said everything is fine, but he, he was a little late, but the weather's bad, so, uh, I tell you, he's amazing, the guy does such a good job.
Yeah, he, he does.
He does a great job, never complains.
Well, he does, that's right.
So, everything's great for that, he said.
All right, sir, thank you. Uh, now we move on to wastewater operations with Gary Johnson.
Jim, I mean, we, uh, we need a cologne.
What?
A cologne, it's a grinder pump, it's a heavy plant works. And it will shred those bag of pumps where he don't have to go out that both, three times a day, clean them, air it out.
Um, is there?
This will grind that up in the air, and it will fix it.
Um, is there, have y'all got a price together on all that?
We, we could look at it, you know, I mean, 'cause if it's a matter on concrete, and that's have a housing with the pump, with the motor. And we have to still look at that, but that would save him a lot of hours on after dangers in that balloon, or fixing those.
Um, well, I mean, really, can't take action on that until we get the estimate of everything it's gonna cost to do it.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And then, once you get that, bring it back, do a presentation.
I just want to bring it up, say that's what we're looking to, that's what we're looking to. And, you know, we're just taking it back.
I have a question. Generator. Y'all, did y'all get it?
Daniel's broken, did it?
Get it in his boat?
Uh, boat, we went out.
Took a picture, show him.
The boat we did go get, and the boat is helped tremendously.
Oh, yeah.
We can actually get in there and work on, but I'm getting tired of using that boat. We're about to wear it out already.
He's leaving over, it's a full boat.
The generator, I did not spend half the money y'all allotted to spend. I'm sorry. I tried.
Oh, that's okay.
Oh, thanks, Don.
We went up there, and we got up there, there was some issues with the one that we were getting, it wasn't mounted to the trailer without drilling holes in the frame, and they didn't wanna do that. Make a long story short, we got one, uh, it's a thirty KV generator, uh, we bought it for forty-five hundred dollars, as is. And we brought it back, we had to put oil in it, all the filters, fuel in it, everything like that. So, we went to Napa and got all the parts to do it, and I'm, I don't know if you've got a bill on it yet, or not, it's not that, it's not near us, but this, we saved on it. And, uh, I have to give this credit to Jordan, because, uh, as far as the diesel motor, I took, I, I took care of that part. As far as all this military stuff?
Yeah.
Jordan, he, that's his baby.
Right.
He dealt with him when he was in service, he knew what he was doing. There's the outcome of it right there. That light's plugged into the generator, it is running. And you've got forty-five hundred dollars plus whatever we owe. And, um, once we get everything done on it, it's gonna be put in the secondary barn down there, and I hope it never comes back out. Uh, we are gonna write up maintenance procedure on it.
But if we do it still?
We're gonna start it up and run it once a month. On the maintenance schedule, other than that, I hope we never have to use it, but there it is. As far as the rain, all the rain we've had, uh, if we get any rain at all tonight, we're probably gonna run over in the games. They're within an inch, right at the bottom, and within an inch from going over the bank right now. It's been there all day. We're running right at five hundred gallons discharge.
Yeah, they're calling for heavy rain.
We can't put out no more.
That's all we need.
Did you imagine, almost every night this week, we've been called out, and last week, we've been called out. That was one thing where Jimmy had some hours last week, Jordan was at work, I got called out, I had to go down in that stump at number three. Talked to Joe, we decided we'd get Jimmy to help us, and I'm sure he'll charge for it. That was probably one of the things. And, uh, right now, if we get any more rain, we're in trouble, but everybody in the stadium.
Since he's stormed out of here, does he still work down there? Before, I mean.
That is your ult decision.
No, I mean, I think that he does, to me, that was.
What?
That was a heated one.
That is your ult decision. That's between you or me.
I don't try to contact him and talk with him.
Yeah.
I did not mean to make him mad, I just meant.
I don't think he's abusing it, really. I mean, it's working.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean.
I guess I was wrong.
Now, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. But, you know, he, he goes out there, and he writes somebody, tell him, you gotta get this cleaned up. And maybe happen. And then he comes back out there, where he goes past, he's, you know, this is your seven days, you gotta get the rest of that motor. And, I don't know how I wanna put it, but I mean, I don't think he's abusing it, because he's constantly in contact with me. He calls me out, I go out and look at things with him, um, he, he's.
I mean, I'd say he's been doing a really good job, excellent job at it, and it's getting cleaned up. It's getting cleaned up, and it's looking a whole lot better.
And if I'm the main spend, I think, you know, lately, it has been nothing. I really do.
All the thing for me is, you can't tell somebody a motor, and they go by every day and look at it and.
Yeah, yeah, you can, yeah.
You can't?
Yes. If you wait a week to go back, if they mowed it on the day after you came, it's gonna be not ready again.
You didn't notice though. So, you got seven days to do it. You don't need to go back for seven days.
Well, what if they did it the day after you went, and it rained for three days? When you go back the next time, it won't look like they did anything.
Yeah, well, okay. Maybe, uh. I might've got a little bit.
He's just saying, well, it's. He's just asking, well, I see.
I didn't mean to make you mad.
It was just a question, I mean, that's your white ass question.
I mean, I'm looking after the city.
But I understand, but he's contacted me, he comes to my house, gets me out of the house and talks to me about what he's doing. Why he's gotta run back and forth. Um, some people he can't catch, he has to go back several times, um, to get in touch with them. Uh, he has to run the PVA and then back out there and try to find out who actually owns that. He tries to contact the homeowners, the tenants or the landlords. And, uh, I mean, I don't think he's...
We've got a full working enforcement board now.
Yep.
And...
I just hate it because I don't go back to square one.
Don't mess with it. But now here we are, I hope he reconsider's.
I think he just spoiled the bucket.
Yeah, I don't wanna go back to square one because it is...
I feel bad, I, I should've, I should've spoke up, Gary.
You should have, I wish you would.
I do too.
All right, so...
Didn't mean nothing by it, I mean, it's nothing.
No, I didn't mean that, I did not mean...
You were just asking a question.
No, I know.
Just miscommunication, it's something wrong.
Don't know unless you ask, you know, that's the way it works.
All right, do you have anything else to report, Mr. Johnson? Let's see. All right, we'll move on to old business, we got, uh, we have the second reading of the Code of Ethics Ordinance, or the summary.
Yep. An ordinance amending the City of Bedford Ordinance Four, Series nineteen ninety-one, which establishes a code of ethical conduct applicable to officers and employees of the city. Summary, the ordinance amends the prior ethics ordinance to allow the City of Bedford to meet the standards to become a certified City of Ethics. Certification under the Kentucky League of Cities Program recognizes that city officials have adopted principles and procedures that offer guidance on ethical issues and a mechanism to resolve complaints at the local level. Program also increases public trust and confidence in the city's government. The ordinance has been amended by the addition of a section on findings, which articulates the value of ethics, their importance in the running of local government, and the increase in the public's confidence in its local government, which ethical processes and procedures are adopted. The amended ordinance expands upon the purpose and authority of the ethics ordinance, the original ethics ordinance. The amended ordinance includes additional definitions. The ordinance has been amended to expand upon the rules surrounding conflicts of interest in general and contracts with the city specifically. The amended ordinance adds a section on incompatible offices, which outlines which officers cannot be held by the same person. The ordinance is amended to add a section explaining when an officer or employee must withdraw from participating in his or her job due to conflicts of interest. The section of the ordinance on receipt of gifts changes the amount of a gift an official or employee makes up from under one hundred dollars to no amount whatsoever. The amended ordinance prohibits any use whatsoever of city property for personal use. The amended ordinance prohibits nepotism. The amended ordinance prohibits a city official or employee of the city from representing other interests before the city. The ordinance is amended to expand on the misuse of confidential information. The amended ordinance prohibits political solicitation by officials or under, or employees of underlings and prohibits officials and employees from conducting political solicitation during working hours. The amended ordinance prohibits use of the government, of a government office to reward political friends. The amended ordinance prohibits an official or employee from engaging in any outside employment which results in a conflict of interest with his or her municipal duties. The amended ordinance prohibits an official or employee from representing an interest before the city for one year after the end of his or her employment with the city. The ordinance is amended, put limits on the acceptance of fees in honoraria and endorsements. The amended ordinance prohibits officials and employees from encouraging others to violate the ordinance and orders them to report any violations of which they are aware to the Ethics Board. It also prohibits falsely reporting incidents. The amended ordinance requires all elected officers and members of city boards and commissions to attend all meetings. It is a violation of the code to miss more than one-third of scheduled meetings. The amended ordinance adds policies for both the use of social media, for the use of social media and email, social media and email. The amended ordinance expands upon the finan, the existing financial disclosure requirements and sets out how and when to file statements, the form of the statement, the order, the control and maintenance of the financial statements, the contents of said statements, and what constitutes non-compliance. The amended ordinance creates an Ethics Board to enforce the provisions of the Ethics Ordinance. It sets forth membership requirements and term limits. It sets out how to conduct meetings, the powers and duties of the Board, training and education of Board members, filing an investigation of complaints and hearing and appeal procedures. The ordinance gives the Ethics Board the power to issue advisory opinions and it prohibits reprisals against people who disclose violations. Any person who violates a provision of this ordinance shall, upon conviction thereof, be subject to a fine of not more than one thousand dollars. The city shall have the right to recover the fine, any fines in a civil action in the nature of debt if the offender fails to pay the penalty within a prescribed period of time. This summary is made pursuant to the authority of KRS eighty-three eight point zero six zero, sentence nine, closed parents, which allows the city to prepare for publication a summary of an ordinance in lieu of the publication of the full ordinance itself. The ordinance becomes effective ninety days after the final reading and publication. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the Office of the Clerk for the City of Bedford, where it may be inspected and introduced and read publicly the first time, April sixteen, twenty nineteen. And today, this, uh, publicly read the second time, June seventeen.
All right, I'll entertain the motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
Second. Um, okay, then, we need to go to a roll call vote by voice. So we'll start with Gary Johnson, yes or no, you want to approve it?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Can I say yes, make the passes?
And then, um, there is a meeting, the Ethics Training, on August twenty-eighth. So people may wanna put that, I believe that's mandatory, isn't it? It's at six PM, August twenty-eighth, uh, here, for the Ethics Training.
Yeah, for the Ethics Training.
Yeah.
Ms. Hill, you're still on the board, aren't you, on that? And Kenny Peyton and Sue Joyce, I talked to Sue Joyce, she wants to be removed from the board. So we need a recommendation for someone else that would like to be on the board. You have to meet once a year and, uh, go over what has gone through in the year and make sure that you are judging us and keeping us in control. So if you, if you know of anybody, if anybody knows of anybody that would recommend to be on the Ethics Board, it's not a big deal, just once a year, you have to meet and go over the things we do. And you, what, did they set a date?
Yeah, you know, I believe, as you suggested, I said in January, I think, uh, just before the end, January one, I think. And we can change it to...
June first?
Oh, June first, I'm sorry, June, yes. Right, that's what you were saying, June. So it's right before the end of the fiscal year?
Yeah, I said the June first for the Ethic Board meeting. Um, that way, it's at the end of our fiscal year. And if you have any questions for that year, you can propose them that we change for the upcoming fiscal year.
You can back up to Kenny?
Um, I talked to Kenny and told him about the training, but I couldn't really get a straight answer out of him whether he was still gonna do it or not. He put the date on his phone, so I'm thinking he's still gonna do it. But Ms. Joyce said that she did not want to do it anymore. And we have to have a three-member board, so we have to find someone else to appoint to the board.
And, uh, one other, this is, this is something that Jim and Jennifer go to as well, isn't it?
Yes, all city employees, it'll be all city employees, anybody that works with us, um, they all need to be here for it. Um, the Ethics Board, we're having the training, y'all need to be here. Um, we all need to be here, Jordan, uh, the Jimmys, uh, Lee and anybody that works with us needs to be at the same for this effort.
What was the date on that again?
I'm sorry?
What was the date on that again?
The twenty-eighth, August twenty-eighth. At six PM, I think it's a Wednesday.
I think Jordan's on board.
I might be too.
Because that's the only time that, that's the only time that their trainer could get here.
I think that's the date he was on the board on that, that they're in the Asian board.
All right, let's move on to have the second reading of the sidewalk ordinance.
An ordinance concerning the repair and replacement of sidewalks. Whereas the City of Bedford has sidewalks within the city limits and whereas the sidewalks suffer both ordinary wear and tear and other damage, and whereas a plan for the repair and replacement of sidewalks is necessary to maintain the quality of sidewalks, protect the city from liability, and facilitate travel throughout the city, now therefore be it ordained by the City Commission of the City of Bedford, Kentucky as follows. Section one, responsibility for repair and replacement of sidewalks. As city sidewalks are considered part of the city's streets that are reserved for pedestrians, the repair and or replacement of sidewalks within the city falls under the authority of the City Commission to maintain. It is neither possible for a city to maintain perfect sidewalks, nor does the law impose a standard. Claims against the city for sidewalk repairs or replacements shall be reviewed under Claims Against Local Governments Act, KRS sixty-five point two thousand, um, et cetera. And then, section two, sidewalk committee. A ci, city sidewalk committee is hereby created consisting of three members. One member shall be the City Commissioner in charge of streets and sidewalks. The committee shall review all sidewalks within the city limits at least once every calendar year and shall create a list and a map of all repairs and replacements and or replacements to be made. The committee shall estimate the cost to make the repairs, replacements. The committee shall prioritize the list and shall submit an up-to-date copy to the full City Commission at least once each calendar year. The sidewalk committee shall be responsible for determining whether the damage to the sidewalk has been incurred by the abutting, uh, property owner or not. The committee shall pass on to the City Commission all information regarding the responsibility for cost of repair slash replacements, cost to be borne by the city. The cost of the labor to repair and or replace the sidewalk shall be the responsibility of the city, runs the responsibility of the city, unless the cause of the damage is the fault of the property owner abutting the sidewalk. The City Commission shall send the property owner a letter advising of the required repairs, the schedule for repairs, the estimated cost to the property owner once the commission has determined a repair replacement is to be made. The city shall repair, replace all damaged sidewalks as funds and time allow. In section four, the cost to be borne by the property owner, the cost of the materials to repair and or replace the sidewalk shall be the responsibility of the owner of the property abutting the sidewalk. Where two or more properties abut the sidewalk in question, the costs will be distributed according to the ratio of the amount of sidewalk abutting each individual property. If the property owner is determined to be responsible for the damage, the property owner shall be responsible for both the cost of the labor and material. The city shall bill the abutting property owner for all repairs, replacements if the property owner has been found to be responsible for the damage. The city shall bill the property owner for the materials only if the property owner is not found responsible. The city may take a lean on the property of the abutting owner in the process and the amount of the expenses incurred if the property owner does not reimburse the city, or the city may place an assessment on the property tax bill of the abutting property owner to collect the amount owed to the city. Date of first reading, April sixteen, second reading.
All right, I'll entertain the motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
Um, and we need to go around the roll call vote again. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote, yes or no, to approve this?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Ms. Doc?
Yes.
And I approve also. Okay, that's old business, now we move to new business. Um, we did, uh, I imagine, the people that came here before know about this reverse, reverse salt auction.
It's the same as last year.
Yeah, the same as last year.
Twenty-five ton would be one thousand, they had it at forty-five dollars.
Yeah, if we get our salt now for the roads for winter, it's a lot cheaper.
Did we use all what we got last year, is there some left?
There is...
Didn't use very little, did Jim?
Oh, yeah, we used a lot.
You did?
Uh, there is some left, exactly, I don't know, I'll be quite honest, I really don't care. Uh, because if I drive out there and I get a boat and I leave and I go put it down, I don't have to go back down to the plant, cut the base, climb up on the truck. If, if they come out a ton or two ahead, I personally don't care.
What you got, that though is a plus.
Pain and if I go real low, they'll let me know.
Yes.
And if they don't come in low, I really don't care whatsoever.
Where do we purchase our salt?
Compass minerals.
Compass minerals?
I'll make the motion, yes.
Make the motion to approve?
Yeah.
Do we have a second? All in favor? All opposed? And it's accepted. All right, the next thing on the list is discuss the cemetery cremation.
All right, this is for Jill, the one we talked about last, or we talked about, I wasn't here. I talked to Jay, it's for a Don Hopter, he's been in the ground for ten years. The families want to dig it up. Jay says he, there's no laws for it, he said they're allowed to do it. He said, best advice would be to charge them the three hundred dollars. We go out there, dig it up, clean it off, and hand it over to Tanley and Eppert and let them do what they want to with it. He said, it, it's beans, it's a crematory. He said, on the crematory, it doesn't show that there, there's a body and it's this, where, it's in the cemetery where it's here. So Jay said, he doesn't see an issue with letting them do it.
And I talked to him, he said, the only thing is you have to have, uh, the cemetery director or the funeral director out there at all times while it's being exhumed. And you have to give the families the opportunity to be there when it's exhumed. And he said, that's basically, he said, unless, um, he said, you can even move a body, um, as long as it stays within the confinement of that cemetery, you do not need a court order. But if you're exhuming a body from this cemetery to take it, putting care of it in the cemetery, you have to go through courts and get a court order to do it. But he said, if this, there's no court orders. And they just have to be out there to watch the process, make sure it brings gun to the...
Would that, would they agree with that?
That's what they wanna do.
That's what they wanna do.
That's right, they're agreeing to it, okay.
So, uh, can I get someone to make a motion if you wanna let them...
So how, we're gonna charge them three hundred dollars?
And just put that in and we won't charge you to go out and dig it up or anything?
Yeah, all the cost falls on them.
No, they'll pay the city, the city will go out there and dig it up.
Why not, as I say, there's, all the cost falls on them, they pay us to go do it. We're not out anything.
Can I ask a question about the grave digger while we're on the subject? If he charges five hundred and fifty dollars, how much do we get paid from the funeral home for him?
Three fifty.
He charged us three fifty?
Family?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had a five fif, it was five fifty, yeah?
It was a two, it was a two hundred. It was a Sunday, no?
Is that when he asked for his equipment in?
Yeah, yeah. So it's not like he had to bring it or it was a Sunday, that we didn't know about.
But then we own a deposit of a hundred of that.
No, so then, yeah, no, seven hundred is what we get for opening closing. Hundred would be a location fee, if you see that on there.
We've already went through the finances, but that's not what's on here. In the Conson's Cemetery, it was, for an opening and closing, it got a hundred and a cremation was three hundred.
The hundred was a location fee and the cremation was for three hundred.
I forgot to ask that.
I think that more will be cremated down the road, what they, that would be, that was cheap, that's cheap, we don't build.
It was a deposit, the hundred was a deposit for location fee. It was a deposit in it.
But it says opening and closing, so...
You look started like, "Mm-hmm."
Okay, opening and closing.
So we're missing that deposit somewhere or...
Mm-mm, we missed a deposit, four hundred dollars for a loc- Mm-mm, we missed a deposit, $400 for a location fee. So it should have been location fee and not opening and closing. We didn't have any opening and closing until this month, you'll see like three or four.
Well, why would you pay Stanley Clark five fifty?
Was it for the previous month?
Five thirty?
Yeah, I'll tell him his birthday, if he shows up to you.
So we should have a $700 deposit from April.
Oh, yeah, not April, no, May. And you just see it in June.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that, because it's not making any sense at all.
Don't mark it.
All right, so now can I get a motion to approve them removing this cremation?
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor? All opposed? Most passes. All right, now we move on to the first reading of fiscal year 2019-2020 budget.
Do you mind? Yeah, just because you know the numbers. I got my copy of it. Do you mind reading it, Jennifer, just to see?
Or if I can just look at it?
Yeah, put the numbers first.
You can just look at it, keep the difference in it, and you'll write it.
Give everybody a copy of the budget?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to copy it.
Question I had right off the bat is, uh, the way it looks, uh, last year's payroll's expenses, uh, was budgeted at $70,000. And we only increased that by 2,000. And we just increased Jordan and Leanne's amount of hours.
It's not over anyway.
Okay, as long as we have enough plotted to cover, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, there was excess left, and we just had a little excess to make sure cause of adding the extra hours.
All right, that was just my main concern there.
Are we taking in much from the road fund now? I don't think much.
Taking in from the road?
From the road fund? Are we taking in?
Go back to Mr. Road Aid?
Yeah.
Um, to my knowledge, no, we still have not received that 7,500. Do you know any information on that, you for you sending in?
No, it's been sent in, and I don't know anything else. I'll have to have them, we'll turn it in tomorrow.
Yeah, because we sent the paperwork, Jennifer got all the paperwork, I can't say we, she did. Um, she got everything, she sent it into them, and now it's on her court, and we're waiting to get your something back to them. Because I do know I got a report, they were holding 7,500, which may be more now. But when I got the report, they were holding 7,500 until we get this taken care of.
I'll make a motion to accept that as the budget.
A budget has to have two reviews.
I will.
So, yeah, we're just bypassing reading. It don't have to be voted on now, but the second reading, it will have to be voted on. All right, if everybody's ready, we'll move on to the next thing. Um, and this is accept the proposal for the sewer expansion funding. It is through KIA to accept them working with us to do it. Um, it's nothing binding, it's, uh, no obligation. Just, it's just telling them, yes, we were interested in it so they can start on their end on the paperwork. Because there's a lot of paperwork.
I think before we do that, we've got to come up with an audit.
Well, we got to, I mean, if I have to.
I mean, it's worthless.
If we don't get the audits, it's all dead anyway.
And the trouble we've been having, I think, I mean, we're waiting around, it's costing us money anyway, it's costing time. We get the state to come in and do it and forget it. Pay them extra, because?
But the state said the only way they will do a city is if we have actual verifiable black and white proof that there's something funny going on.
And I have a guy who's been talking today, he's Greg Jackson, out of Bloom Company, Louisville. I sent him all the information today, and he says he's got a meeting at the end of the week, and he'll let me know first thing Monday, then they could be out here. And give us support too.
The state will do the counties, but they will not come out and do a city unless there's actual verifiable proof there's something funny going on. Then they said they will come out and do it, but they charge like three times what a normal auditor does. So, I mean, we don't have any.
We haven't seen anything in three years, haven't.
The only thing we've got is a non-finished one.
No, that is finished. I think that is a finished one.
Um, KIA says it is.
He said it was.
Well, it states, I've got it right here, and it states right at the front.
Uncompleted.
Uncompleted audit, which is just, uh.
Yeah, KIA said it screws on what we said in there, and they will not accept that as a completed audit.
We've got it here somewhere. But, yeah, it's, it says.
The only thing is if it shows a vast improvement from 17 to 18, then they'll know we just changed you with the garden and stuff, and.
Because that's the thing, that one, he said that one was completed.
But 18 is going to have to show a vast improvement over what that's got, wouldn't it?
Um, yeah, right here on the front page, it's a disclaimer. Because of the significance of the matter is describing the basis, basis for disclaimer, we have not been able to obtain sufficient appropriate audit evidence to provide a basis for an audit opinion. So it's not complete. As far as, I mean, that other auditor may think so, but it states that it isn't.
Um, yeah, but with this, accept, accept to give you a proposal, that's so they can get started on their end, on their paperwork, because they don't want to start doing all the paperwork, and then they change their mind and say, no, we're not interested. But this here is completed contingent on, uh, uh, the surveys, the audits, and the county getting a mandatory ordinance for both of them. So if one of those three things fail, well, two of the three things. If we can't supply the audit and we don't get the ordinance for the sewer, uh, for mandatory hookup, we're done. The KIA will drop it, they will not give us the loan.
Well, I was confused last night in this meeting anyway. Was the CDBG grant 100% or is it a matching?
No, it's, to get a CDBG grant, you have to have matching funds from somewhere.
So we're going to borrow the money to match those funds?
Yeah, well, yes, in a way, just, the way it's set up, uh, CDBG, it's just take $2 million for math purposes, it's close enough. Uh, the project is $2 million. KIA will finance the whole thing for us right now, the whole $2 million. But CDBG is going to step in there and say, we'll pay a million of this for you, at free, no cost. So that drops it to a million. Well, with KIA right now, the offer that they are giving us is a 50% forgivable amount. So out of that million that we still have to pay, we only have to pay $500,000, because they automatically, whatever half they give us, they forget, it's half of it forgiven, 50% forgiveness. And plus, on top of that, KIA is only offering a 1% interest on this right now. Um, they said they can't guarantee next year it would be the same. Said next year, if we go do the same thing next year and try to wrap this through, it may be 10% interest. But as of right now, this is an extremely good offer, but it's all contingent on things we got to get done right now.
What's, what's the deadline?
We have 60 days from June 5th. June 5th is when they sent me the acceptance papers, um, and, uh, I said, shit. I'm going to blame it on that auditor, we talked to that one auditor, and he said, yeah, no problem, he said this shouldn't be a problem at all, I can have this audit done for you in 60 days, have it back to you, and have you ready to go. For three weeks, we waited, 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 well then, they sent Jennifer, called Jennifer, and sent her a little note, they never even opened up her packets, they just stuck it back in a box and shipped them back to us, said this is going to be at least two months before we can touch it. So we wasted three weeks on this auditor, waiting for him to tell us what we need to do on this audit, and he never even opened the packets, he just sent them back to us. So now we're having to scramble to find another, oh, he did send a list of auditors, of CPAs, and Jennifer was called about 14 or 20 or how many, it was on that list. And, uh, we were waiting to hear back from them, to see if they feel they can get it done in time. But this guy was positive he could do it, yeah, no problem, or he, he even told me, he said if anybody said anything, you'd give them my name that I'm working on. And, uh, I said, all right, and then he never even opened the papers that she sent to him, he put them back in the box and shipped them right back. Jimmy, got a question?
I just want to add something, and, uh, I don't know how to explain it, but. This project that he was here last night talking about, they're calling it expansion, a lot of things have thrown into that expansion that started out here before my time. And back, Rita was around, and they put in for pump upgrades and all this stuff, and it's all been combined into one. It's been pushed through the system, it's getting close. I hate for you all to vote to kill it out now, even if you don't get your audits and stuff done. It's still there, all this public meetings and everything that they've already done, those boxes are already checked off. So next year, when it comes back around, we're, you'll probably be in good shape then, and that project is still active.
Yeah, I mean, we probably.
We're not, if we kill it, we start back to, I don't know, 2008, '90, whatever y'all first.
It was a long time.
Started, we don't want to have to climb that ladder again.
Yeah, I know, I mean, we're pushing it, we're in a rush, we're in a mad right now to get this done in a 60-day time period, and the reason that I'm pushing so hard is that 1% interest, because next year.
How much is, uh, are we going to be, even at $500,000, how long a loan is this?
Thirty years.
How long?
Thirty.
So we're talking, what, $2,500 a month? $2,200 a month? Figuring that out, Will?
But I mean, we got to make the system, the main reason.
And I know we need all this, but 24 customers aren't going to do it to make, help us pay it, so, I mean, I'm not going to kill it.
We're paying now, it's $2,600 a month.
How much of a gamble is that?
On what?
Right now, we have.
We're paying $2,600 a month right now on the loan that we're currently having. But it's real close to being paid off, but we, we are paying that out each month right now.
This boss supposed to be paid off this year, but it's.
Two years. But, uh, right now, you can ask Jimmy on station one and on station three, we're put in back in 81, 85, something like that. Um, the pumps are in them, they do not even make anymore, they do not have parts for them, the parts cannot be found, they're obsolete. Um, this expansion upgrade will completely replace those two pumping stations with updated, all-new equipment, because right now, if pump station one goes bad, pump station three goes bad, we're in big trouble, because we can't get pumps for it, and there's no pumps, you can't just go buy a pump and match it up, you have to run all new piping, you've got to completely reset the whole thing up. And right now, we can't fix either one of them, because we can't get parts for them, we're just, Jimmy's holding them together with dust, paint, and spit right now, and we've got our fingers crossed that they don't go down. And that's what part of this is for, is to upgrade and renew those pump stations.
You said there'd be 24 customers added to it, is what you said?
Yeah, that's what I was talking about last night, 24 customers would be added on. I mean, and that, that is what was originally started, going that route for the expansion, but I am a whole lot more interested in these two pump stations that we got that we can't fix.
In other words, we're out with FEMA, I'm getting any money from them, is that right?
No, FEMA has nothing to do with this, they don't have nothing to do with the pump station, this is a completely different animal.
And we supposed to get some money from FEMA, though, on, on this flood we had?
Um, possibly, we've sent all the paperwork in, to our knowledge, the way we read the documents they've sent us, that when they get all the documents, get all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, that we should get back around $47,000 somewhere in that area. No, I'm sorry, I can't see back, Will, Eric.
Oh, sorry.
Last thing I ask, if you, uh, don't get the CDBG grant, can you go ahead with the KIA loan?
Yes, we will.
Could you go ahead and use that KIA loan for your fixing up stuff, and you have to wait till next year to verify that CDBG grant? Do you think that's a whole division?
Um, we're trying to get it go through this year, because if we accept the KIA loan right now, then next year, we're out of the run for the city beat, because it has to be done at the same time, to my knowledge, that's the way they talk, and it has to be cooperatively done. And, uh, so if we go on to do the KIA, we're in for $2 million. It's like $1,987,000, so $2 million.
And when you can hang up, start now, with that, your daughter, and you got that grant now, but you didn't get the grant, you get that money, and what?
Um.
It's all tied together.
It's all tied together, but they can't. That's what I'm saying, they can't really give us numbers unless we take and, uh, accept the proposal to let them do it, because they haven't started on anything, because they're not going to start, and we're not going to, you know, want to do it, because they've got apparently a whole ton of paperwork they got to get started and get on. And, uh, so this here is just an approval saying, okay, yeah, go on, start your paperwork, and it's all contingent on the, the things that we got to get done, and if it comes up to, when KIA comes up with the loan, we still don't have to accept it.
Oh, that's all, I was thinking, you ought to have that loan in secondary account, paying money for it, you can't do it.
No, we, we can, we can kill the loan at any time. If we, if we lose the CDBG, um, if something comes up and we can't, you know, we don't feel that we can't, we can kill the, the loan at any time. And we do not have to accept the money, that's a whole other process. When that gets done, then we have a whole bunch of paperwork, we'll probably have to have another meeting with KIA, and just sit there all day signing paperwork. Uh, but as of right now, they're willing, they're, we've got the loan as of right now, but they need to start the pro, the paperwork process. So that's what this is for, is saying, yeah, go on and start it, and we'll see what happens. So any more questions about it?
As long as we're not hooked.
Yes, we're not, we're not obligated or in any way, shape, or form.
And I'll be quite honest, I don't think you'll get it this year, because I don't think everything's going to happen. But, uh, comes up next year, if the city's got their ducks in the row, it'll just be six months.
Yeah, well, two things, next year, they cannot guarantee that the money will be there, and they cannot guarantee the percentage rate.
Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the proposal and move forward.
Yeah, because maybe we'll get an audit out of it.
It's just a barn, all this.
This is ridiculous.
I know, it is, believe me, we're stopped every direction we turn, every minute we try to take this audit.
With this, uh, eight million dollars?
It's connected, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you make a motion?
All in favor? All opposed? Mr. Green is opposed. Motion passes. All right, let's see, expansion budget. Uh, now, we, we move on to Trimmell County Historical Society, Ms. Hill Parish, and a young lady with her.
I'm Betty Hatney.
If y'all would like to come up here and talk to the commissioners?
Come on in.
Just walk up there by the steering, I'm sorry. Walk up there by the steering. Um, it's Betty Hatney, I'm the Historical Society, I'm the Secretary and Co-Treasurer, and I have a, the Trimmell County Historical Society had it beginning early in 1977, when Clara Scott, Lola Spark, and Darrell Spark ran the upper room of Cardinalville's. Mills Drive Course, to discuss the possibility of beginning a group through, uh, Trumbull County Historical Society. The object of this group was to be a preservation of Trumbull County records. The first meeting was held in the Trumbull County Library in May of seventy-seven, Ms. Irene Long filed an application for a charter in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, issued a certificate of incorporation on August twenty-first, nineteen seventy-eight, since that time, this society has published over thirty books on the beginning years of Trumbull County and the first, and the two major cities, Milton and Bedford. Many of those original records have been lost to us, or in the case of the first list of county taxpayers, and more importantly, the first citizens of Trumbull County, the list of records we donated to the University of Eastern Kentucky. We have learned they are being stored in boxes in the library, as we, as they have not really, as they have really no need for them, let's not let this happen again. The society also organized the county's birthday party for their hundred-fiftieth year. In recent years, we have given honor to one of our own, Henry Clay Wilson, who became a circuit rider evangelist, and twice president of Ashbury College, and founder of their theological seminary. We've organized the Veterans Memorial Garden, and after being granted a parcel of land in the Bedford Cemetery by the city of Bedford, we are setting memorial stones to honor the military veterans who are buried elsewhere, or do not have a known headstone at their grave. In twenty-seventeen, we were granted custody of the old stone jail, nearly thirty-two years, after the Trumbull County Fiscal Court declared it as custody. We have documentation of things that were there, that were, and we are striving to recreate that time, we want to be part of moving Trumbull County forward, but to do so, we must remember our past, therefore, we come to you for assistance. We are asking for five hundred dollars to help get the stone jail ready for tourists, touring during upcoming activities. Many requests have been made to the jail, and we would like to show it with pride. We are continuing our quest to clean neglected cemeteries, and add to the twenty-nine honor stones we have set in the county, neighboring counties and neighboring states. Won't you have us be known for more than the only county in the United States named Trumbull? Do I have any questions, or do I need?
Anybody have any questions for? Thank you very much.
You know, we're the only county in the United States named Trumbull.
Thank you.
They weren't something new.
Um, so, I mean, what do you, what do you ladies need, which are-
Uh, for the jail, we need to liquefy it, we need to clean it, we need to paint it on the inside, and paint the outside, that'd be everything in the future, um, yeah, do we, do we, do we like to go in there and paint the jails?
When you come across my hand, go around and, and just-
He wasn't a white hair guy, knew it.
'Cause it's in there.
Um, as far as the cemetery goes, we have heard that it was doing that, and, uh, actually the VA will pay for a certain number of stones, it's probably not a condition, but, uh, I think we're here to work.
Um, how much are you looking, looking for?
I'm looking for five hundred, it was eight more.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be a problem. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah, speak up, I can hear you.
I'll make a motion for us to donate five hundred dollars.
I'll second it. All in favor? All opposed?
Only, it's gonna be a dirtbag.
We'll put a new bed in there. All right, uh, now, we will move on in the presentation by Ms. Jennifer here.
It's not really a presentation, I'm just asking, uh, we got paint samples, and we got prices, and-
What are you laughing at? Because her Leanne had this out, and said, which one was? Yeah, I walked up to the window, and they had it out looking at it, and they said, I liked this one, I thought it was makeup, and Leanne said, yeah, you can get about a five gallon bucket, I said, well, it's makeup, do you use? They, oh, this is paint, I thought it was makeup.
So, we got color, I'm gonna show you the colors that we picked out, we got that in the meeting rooms, in the hallway, and this trimmed it in white, and then we went to old, black and white, big photos of Bedford to hang on the wall. This will be the rec room back here, the walls also trimmed in white. This is the trim.
Are you talking about painting the whole thing?
It's gonna, it's, yes, we're gonna paint everything but the gym.
But the gym?
But the gym, yeah.
My office too?
Yes, here is the color for the bathrooms, both men and women's.
Purple?
It's not purple, it's like an ash violet.
That's purple.
You got it now, it's hot paint now, come on, that is pretty, with the, uh, the base one that running up the way in.
That's just for men, or the women's bathroom, right?
No, we both.
That's not, uh-
You'll paint his?
It doesn't have, they don't have the sense of, yeah, I don't like it, I thought it was pretty.
I don't care.
It is pretty, but-
It's something neutral, it looks much better than this.
Something might get pretty old pretty quick.
And then the kitchen.
I like that.
And then also trimmed in white with that trim, it would be very, very pretty.
Wouldn't it make it off the dark, near, throw dark colors on?
No, I don't think so, not with the floor.
You want something kind of light, so, you know.
They're all light, except for this one.
Get the dark color, and it makes it dark.
And then, the hallways will be the same as in here, down the hallways will be the same as in here, and then our office, my office, will be-
Not purple.
This, yellow.
Yellow and blue striped.
I've got it white in there.
Yeah.
Will be the, and then, Hilda's grandson?
Son.
Son, come in and said it'd be about twenty gallons to paint the building, so we've got prices on, altogether, we're probably looking at about, maybe five, five fifty on paint, and then you add in another hundred, two hundred dollars for the rollers, and then the paint, and, or the tape, and then the plastic, so you're looking at about seven hundred dollars maybe, and then me and Leanne are willing to do it.
What's wrong with this?
It's old.
It's old, and people pay, I know, but people pay, there's-
It looks good.
It looks good.
We got a model now.
Yeah.
There's big holes in the hallway, we're gonna fix those, fix them, and do everything, we're gonna do the work, it'll be, can we do yellow in the kitchen?
You don't feel better either, do you?
That dark color in the bathroom?
I like yellow, I know.
Well, we can do purple.
We can switch it, it doesn't have to be that, I just, this was just kind of an idea, but-
I like the grays.
I really like the grays, and then, I like the yellow in the office here, so you don't like the bathroom?
I like that color.
So you want something else?
I'm not sure it's neat for enough.
Okay.
It is pretty.
We'll find something else for the bathroom.
I like a bedroom color.
Or you could use the gray in the bathroom, too.
I don't know.
The dark gray, okay.
But you like the kitchen?
I like-
The kitchen's okay, okay, so, thinking about some, about some eight hundred dollars, me and Leanne are gonna do the work, we're gonna get kids in here to help, we're gonna come in on Sundays and do it, we're gonna stay out on weekdays.
Y'all take care of that, I don't think. The coverage and the paints and that.
I just think it needs a refreshing, there's a bunch of holes, the kids-
Need to be modernized, it's, it's drab and just old looking.
Right, we have to paint everything every few years.
Yeah.
It's been over fifteen years since this building-
We was digging through the file cabinet and found the swatches in the file cabinet.
So you're gonna paint the trim?
I don't know, I'm gonna try to get, but, like, a fair, see that, we'll do that, like a white, you know what I'm saying, I don't know if we'll do that around the two walls, but-
Around the doors, it'll be white.
Around the doors, and then around those doors, it'll be white, if y'all wanna leave the ground, we can leave the ground, but it's all scuffed and just-
Who wants to say what, who's done the work?
Me and Leanne, and we'll have kids come in to help, um, the, me and Leanne will do the majority of the work.
I'm all for it.
Sounds good.
All right, taking a motion to approve that, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, regime?
Depends on when you do it, I may come up to do level ground.
Yeah.
I'm not getting on the ladder up there at the top.
You bring your big, big, big glasses.
Me and Leanne will do all that, we're gonna tape everything off, and we're tempted to win it, we're gonna, we're gonna have kids, hopefully, some of the kids beta clubs, some of the kids from school, we're gonna do just the ground level, what parts, but I don't know how much kids run around.
How much paint do you think you're doing?
Twenty gallons.
Yeah, 'cause I've got the, uh, high school principal asked me if we could, had some work that we could use some kids for.
Oh, yeah.
Co-oping for the summer, for co-oping, and, uh, I was waiting on Jennifer to get this together, 'cause that would be a good co-op project for the kids from high school, they'll paint.
I mean, I don't want a lot of kids running around and paint just everywhere, so it'll be, it'll be, it'll be well monitored and-
Now, I go over and paint that wall right there, five feet, that wall, and there'll be paint on courthouse.
Yeah, we don't want that.
Maybe like two at a time, two come this day, two come this day, two come this day.
And then, me and Leanne will get on the ladders, we'll do the top part, you have a scaffolding, right, beside the barrow?
Have a lift.
A lift.
Does it come in the house, or come in the house, come inside?
With bin.
Yeah.
We have the one in the gym, but how do you get it to the doors? Do it come afar?
Pop that door and drive it through?
No, the one that's in the gym.
Oh, that? That, I said, there, there, she's been in the gym, I got it.
That's it? That's theirs, that's in the gym?
No, theirs has been in the gym.
Okay, gotcha.
I think everyone's leaving on us.
Yeah. Uh, I don't know if it's proper time or not, but, uh, did you find anything about those lights, uh, in the gym we got to complain about, safety hazard?
Um, no, I have not found anything in that book yet, recorder that shows them lights, uh-
Well, we have that guy that's doing that, the LGD thing, the, the light savers.
Well, it's not really the lights, it's the cover of the-
Globes.
Well, he'll, they'll install all the lights if they do the project, but, um, don't you tell them about it?
No, the, those big round lights in the gym where the kids had busted them-
The colored balls up here.
The globes, they're, they're broken, they're falling on people in the gym.
Everywhere.
Counting class, when they're done with the ground, they got their glass in their-
It's a safety hazard, I mean, in fact, probably, article if I take the gloves off, it's a very bright weather going, where he's right here.
Cause Leanne's running up all the time, and we see it all the time, where the balls look and hit it.
Uh, look at getting new globes, then they make them cages that go around them, where you can't hit them.
They have the cages in them.
No, no, none of them got a cage over them.
Okay, I was looking at all of them.
That's why we're getting busted, 'cause there ain't no cages on them.
They might not bust the glass, but it might knock the light out, but it won't bust-
Cause it's like plastic glass, yeah.
But it's, it's just old and dry rotting, deteriorating, it's crumbling, so that's, I guess that's something to think about for another day. All right, uh, through the painting, uh, now, the city clerk needs a new chair, she's rolling around in her office floor.
Is it really the chair that fell out of?
Yes, because I'm telling you, if you're gonna sit in it, you lean sideways.
Yeah, 'cause you can get on it, and said, I sort of watched her one day, and the whole chair was leaning upside down with it, while she-
And when I went to-
How'd you get that chair?
It's not what you're doing.
I had to go up and knock on.
I don't have one at home.
I asked her where she got that chair, and she didn't, it's been older like that, she's, no, it's broke.
And I have to, I have to go in, so it doesn't feel too comfortable sitting there.
Looks very obvious.
It is, it's just where it's leaning.
I'm waiting to catch her rolling around on the floor, and then we'll get some pictures.
I was laying on the floor, and my chair flipped out, so I needed to make it.
I know, one day you come in, you's all stoned up, moving some-
Five chairs. Yeah, as long, you know, you said chair, you don't spend five hundred dollars on it.
I'll tell you, the best place in the world, I found the bad chairs, is at Restore Center down in, uh, Louisville, down by, uh, Tatersville Road, there's a Restore place there, man, they have almost brand new office chairs, they had ten of them, I'd love to have the money to get them to put in for our meetings, they had ten of them, they're twenty-five bucks a piece, look brand new, um, we bought one for a boy, they had them on sale one day, tried to get rid of some of them, dollar a piece, it looked brand new.
It's good, that's why we were at first, and that we got it.
Yeah.
But they've got a whole section of just chairs, I mean, office chairs, and really nice looking chairs.
Place to get one, yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if the Habitat for Humanity in Madison has some products?
Well, they have them, we go to that one, too, but they're outside in like a garage, and they're all piled up and out laying on dirt and stuff, the one down there at Tatersville Road, it's a beautiful store, it's nice, clean.
I'm not trying to kick it over, it won't usually.
I took the opportunity of bringing it up.
I'll make a motion to get a new chair.
I'll second it.
Yeah, you second it. Can we put a stipulation on, uh, on cost?
What is it?
More than two hundred?
Two hundred?
Will I get praised if I get it under two more?
You'll get praised.
Okay.
Because sure, it'll be good, I sure not gonna pick out a two hundred dollar chair.
She get two hundred dollars for everything?
Hey, I get two hundred bucks, I'll be, let's go.
Hey, I saved five thousand dollars on generator, I ain't getting none of it.
You gotta stop on the back.
You might want to check out these pieces, Kentucky Surplus, they've got thousands and thousands.
Let's try weed for jazz chairs, up there, they got office furniture, El Bazooka. Jimmy just wanna go back and freshen it.
Oh, y'all go back and run them.
All right, so we had motion and second, all in favor with the two hundred dollar limit, uh, and motion passes. All right, next thing is, uh, Renew and Joanne Pitch's contract with us, says her city attorney.
Do I, do you read this, or do I read this?
I just go see that I can.
I just don't hear it.
Resolute and authorize mayor to enter into contract for legal services for the city of Bedford, whereas the city of, is the duty of the city commission to retain legal counsel, and whereas it has been determined that a contract between Joanne Pitch and the city of Bedford is necessary, now therefore, bear resolved by the city of Bedford that the mayor is authorized to enter into a contract for legal services for the city of Bedford with Joanne Pitch to extend from June thirty, two thousand nineteen, to June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, after a reading, after a reading in full on the eighteenth day of June, two thousand nineteen, and a motion by Tammy, second vow, Will, and this has a big voice votes, as you have done.
Yes, girl, get a big voice vote, Gary Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Green, Will, Tammy?
Yes.
So Bobby is?
Yes, yes, for me also.
We, now, we appreciate it.
I thought it was Pike's.
No, yeah, it's Pitch, it's a little-
Okay.
I thought it was Gazinski, or something like that, but Andy get it to me.
Right, right, well, that's my maiden name.
What is?
Gazinski.
And then, Ted?
Gazinski. Um, no, it's on Facebook.
All right, um, next is in line is, uh, I will turn this over, 'cause I don't know nothing about it, Tammy and Will, I think you've been talking about it on the fire room?
Yes.
You ever do a motion to read it? Can I get a motion to read it?
Yes.
Give a second?
I'll second it. You wanna read it, or you want me to, or you wanna explain it, or?
Go ahead and read it, and then, like-
Okay.
You explain a little more about it.
Are you supposed to read it, or?
It, it's fine for you guys to read it, if you wanna kind of explain it a little bit more, I don't know if you have to read it all, or if you wanna summarize it, or if you wanna post it out, yeah.
Just-
What?
Oh, okay, um, the Fire Code twenty-twelve edition, the city of Bedford values the safety of its citizens, and whereas, the NFPA One Fire Code twenty-twelve edition, in the documents listed in chapter two of that code, prescribe regulations governing conditions hazardous to life and property from fire explosion, and provide for the issuance of permissive collection fees. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city commission and city of Bedford as follows, The NFPA one Fire Code two thousand and twelve edition and documents adopted by chapter two, three copies of which are on file and are open to inspection by the public in the office of the city clerk of the city of Bedford hereby adopting incorporated into disorderance as fully as is set out at length herein, and from the date on which disorderance shall take effect, the provisions thereof shall be controlling within the limits of the city of Bedford. And the same are hereby adopted as a code of the city of Bedford for the purpose of prescribing regulations governing conditions hazardous to lives and property from fire explosion, providing for assur- assurance of permissive collection fees. Any person who shall violate any provision of this code or hereby adopt it or fail to comply therewith, or who shall violate or fail to comply with any order made thereunder, or who shall build in violation of many detailed standards and specifications or plans submitted and approved thereunder... Am I, did I read that twice? In accordance with any certificate or permit issued thereunder and from which no appeal has been taken, or who shall fail to comply with section order as affirmed or modified by the court of the component jurisdiction within the time fixed herein, and shall severely, severally, for each and every violation and noncomplaints, respectively, be guilty of not more than... Whatever you guys decide. Right. Or by imprisonment for not less than so many days, not more than so many days, or by both such fine and imprisonment. The imposition of one penalty for any violation shall not excuse the violation or permit it to continue, and all such persons shall be required to correct or remedy such violations or defect within a reasonable time. And when not otherwise specified, the application of above penalty shall not be held to prevent enforced removal of prohibited conditions. Each day that prohibited conditions maintained shall constitute a separate offense. The ordinance number of, and we'll fill that in, of the city of Bedford and ordinance adopting the Fire Code and all other ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. That if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held to be invalid or unconstitutional, such decisions shall not affect the validity or constitutionality of the remaining portions of this ordinance. The city commission of Bedford hereby declares that it would have passed this ordinance, and each section, subsection, clause, or phrase hereof irrespective of the fact that any one of the more sections, sentences, clauses, and phrases be declared unconstitutional. That the city clerk is hereby ordered and directed to cause this ordinance to be published. That this ordinance and the rules, regulations, provisions, requirements, orders, and matters established and adopted hereby shall take effect and be in full force and effective ninety days after the date of its final passage and adoption. So, it's got to do with inhabitable structures that are... Go ahead, Will.
It allows the fire department to enforce Fire Code inside the city limits with businesses, residences that have more than four residential living, uh, residences connected, such as apartment complexes, uh, and it allows us to go in and do inspections uh, for the ABC annually, where we haven't been... We've been doing the inspections, but it's not, we haven't had any ordinance to support that.
How come we don't have, never had an ordinance?
I have no idea.
And is this the most recent one, the two thousand twelve edition?
Yes, sir.
So, if, say, for example, the house that caught, a house caught on fire that's sat there for a year uninhabited, the fire department can go in and say, "This is uninhabitable, condemned, it needs..."
Okay, next question on this. Um, I, I just know what I've been told with dealing with the code enforcement and stuff, that we are not licensed structural experts, and we are not allowed to say anything about structural beings.
No.
So, will this automatically give you all the right to do this? I mean, is there gonna be training, or are we gonna have to pay for training?
No. The fire department sends their own people to inspection school. Uh, there are six inspectors already with the Bedford Fire Department. Uh, you have to go through, there's two levels. Um, there's a level one and a level two inspector. Uh, all you do is make sure that your exit signs are working, that the fire alarms are correct, the smoke detectors are right. There has to be certain things. And then with uninhabitable places, um, if, if there is a fire and we make entry into there, uh, we can take and rule it as structural damage and tape it off, and this is yes to deal with that.
But you can only do that if there's a fire involved?
If there is a fire involved, um, and if there is more than four residences connected.
Okay.
So, it doesn't count if it's a single structure and there's a fire?
If there is a single structure and there is a fire, you can. If there is not a fire and it is a single residence, we can't do anything with that.
What about burning brush, trash, bomb far out?
That, that's, you can't burn any trash. But you're allowed to burn limbs.
Can't burn anything in the city?
Um, you can't. Just you can't burn trash.
You can't burn garbage. You can burn trees, limbs.
Correct, yes.
Brush and stuff like that?
Yes.
So, listen, let's give us a, an option that if we have situations arise like they have in the past, where there's a burnt structure that is not being taken care of, or not, nothing's being done to, to repair it, and it's a hazard to health and well-being.
Would this be, um, paid positions?
No.
Because, I mean, the reason I'm asking it, because when I was doing the fighting zoning, they was talking about building inspectors, and said Timber County cannot afford a building inspector.
No, we, these are fire inspectors only. They use strictly the NFPA manual. They follow it to the guy, the guideline on it, um...
So, they're paid that estate?
No, they are completely volunteer.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. I mean, I just, that's why I want y'all to explain it, 'cause I talked to y'all, and y'all said we're just leaving, we'll explain it. But thanks for reading all that, Tammy.
The, uh, the big issue that I have right now is annually, we have to do a fire inspection for any place that's selling alcohol. There's no ordinance in the city allowing us to do so. This is the ordinance that lets us enforce Fire Code for alcohol sales.
So, alcohol, you can just walk in here and look for code violations, or get away from a fire?
We can walk in there and look for code violations, but they are annually, they are required to be inspected annually.
My, uh, my next question, which is gonna be a major problem, are you gonna be one of the inspectors?
I am an inspector, but no, there's six of us. There's five of us.
Yeah, because with you being on the commission, um, I don't think you need to be involved whatsoever in any way with these inspections.
But is the inspection's gonna be under your direction, be it apart you?
Yeah. As in, I tell them they have...
I'll hang on there. Someone can say you weren't too bad.
Well, I would tell them they have to inspect this building, this building, and this building, because it is this time of the year, and they require their annual ABC inspection. After that, it's, it's completely on them. I walk away.
It's like joint commission, I mean, the survey's a hospital. Uh, the CEO is not responsible for making sure that the pharmacy does their inspections and the nursing stations and the drug center. You know?
Yeah.
It's gotta be done, but it doesn't make the CEO responsible.
Well, I understand, but the thing I'm worried about with him being on the commission...
As long as he doesn't physically do it himself.
Yeah, we come, we have somebody coming here, raising hell with us, if they want something done, blah, blah, and they're fighting with us and fighting, we say no, and then a week later, a fireman shows up to inspect your property. You know, the, right, we're gonna get into a lawsuit with retaliation or something like that.
Well, if it's a requirement yearly, that those structures are inspected, I mean, that's not, it's not safe.
Yeah, I understand. I just, it just scares me that we might be working with the land that might...
And we might curse his flag.
Well, we can discuss this with that Courtney, too. Maybe that Courtney Strong. I don't know if you wanna, you know, we can wait until the, um, the ethics meeting and just verify with her that there, you know, isn't anything.
All right, I'm fine. I just had some questions. I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I'm no legal expert, and I just don't wanna get us caught up in the mess. Uh, all right, uh, um, take a voice vote on whether you wanna approve this or not? Oh, sorry. Yeah, this is first reading.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's first, I'm here, man. I was thinking this was second. So, this is first reading. Okay, uh, next thing, move on to annexation ordinance.
And I asked Jennifer to put this on. Um, the, the thing that I, you know, we wanna get this done, and I told Joe that, uh, the Secretary of State's office wants all this paperwork in the first of September in order to get this done by the end of the year, um, for the two thousand twelve cen- the two thousand twenty census. So, the thing is, the first thing that we have to do is, all, all the property that we want to annex, we have to have surveyed. And, um, so I didn't, like, I know that there was someone that we were using for surveyors, but, um, maybe that person wouldn't be the person we'd use here. But what I need to know, or what we need to know to, to get this started, is find a surveyor. We need an estimate, and we need you guys to, um, you know, approve that expenditure.
I have contacted the surveyor that was highly recommended, the guy in Madison. Uh, I've actually, I've contacted him twice, about a month apart, and they, the first time, the lady told me the owner was out, she would give it to him. I waited a month, nothing. I called the guy back. He said he looked for the information. He couldn't find it, so he took the information again. And he said he don't care what surveyor you go to right now, there's a two-month wait for they can do anything. Said everybody is backed up. He said it's a hot item right now, surveyors. And, um, he said, "So, it's gonna be at least two months." He said, "But since, I waited a month, 'cause this lady didn't give him the information, that he would try to talk to the owner and see if maybe they could get us in a little quicker, and, uh, to come over and give us an estimate on it." So, it would be great.
Be good. I just wonder, why are we surveying people that are already on the survey?
No, this is annexation into the city. Uh, these four properties were start in...
Well, it's in the places I live, they're on survey, and they're all in the city, so...
Oh, no, you're talking about conserving. No, this hasn't do, don't have nothing to do with that. This has absolutely nothing to do with it. No, this is strictly for annexation properties into the city annex. Uh, and what happened was, they started the annexation out here on four houses, I think it was. Um, they got surveys, they got the paperwork called on up, and the paperwork never was filed at the courthouse, and it never was sent to Secretary of State.
Yeah, I know, I want...
And, uh, so now, trying to go back through and redo them, the state said those surveys have expired, and it has to be resurveyed.
Right. Everything has to be redone.
Long as I stay, if it gets a wolf, I better...
Don't those four properties have their own surveys when they bought the place?
Um, I would say if they bought it, they probably had the, the survey there. I don't know if they would have it.
I don't believe it.
You know, I don't know if we can go off that or not. I just know that Secretary of State's here.
I can call her, it's this candy, Anderson.
When you get one, you'll be last forever.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I had the idea that that wasn't a thing, but let me, um, let me call her. I'll do it tomorrow, and, and find out.
Uh, they probably won't take their property survey, 'cause most properties are, part of that property is in the city, part of it's not in the city. Uh, so it's probably gonna be a different survey. You may as well be it.
Wouldn't we, do we need a motion to...
No, well, she just wanted to bring it up on how you wanted to go about this.
Well, if we were gonna get surveys to annex, if there's some other areas that we wanna go ahead and annex?
I know an area that...
Do it all.
I know an area, I've been told, I haven't been able to catch the man, but, uh, two businesses that went in bad, and it's the library and Poppies.
Right.
But I can't catch Mr. Sandusky out there to ask him face to face if he's wanting to do it.
Seven thirty, you're gonna be in there.
Is the annexation...
I ain't.
He's in there. They need to wrap that up.
Is it, uh, only the property owners will to be annexed? Or can we just decide? No, you gotta get...
You've gotta get permission from them. Uh, you can't just overrun them and say, "There and there." You have to get permission from them.
You were saying last night that the map of the annexed city on the state level of Timber County, it ain't anything like ours.
No, um... It's, it's very, very big discrepancy on what the state...
Yeah, I don't have, I've got the map on my...
So, how can that be?
What that quote was filed with the Secretary of State.
What they have?
Yes.
Which leaves... Isn't that legal and binding?
What the Secretary of State had was what legal and binding.
Yeah, he said, "You have to ask the Secretary of State, show him off, I have two maps, and it shows two different things."
If that's the case...
Well, why can't we go by the one that's legal and binding, instead of...
That's the one we're going by, and it is so screwed up.
Yeah. Yeah, the one that they have, uh, we have had vast dimensions and present provisions, it's not even... Yeah, I know. According to that one... No, we wanna trade by it anyway.
It's not the intended, or that's the touch. So, if you get Poppies in the library, you'll have them back in the church.
Or you...
Yes.
Church, you go to the cemetery.
Yeah.
It makes us...
That one map we got shows you going out of town, city limits stops, and then jumps over and picks back up at Signature Healthcare out there. It shows Signature Healthcare is in city limits, but there's a gap in between them, and that can't happen. It has to be contiguous. You have to get each property going out. And, uh, so, I mean, I was confused. Every map I had, it showed a different thing, so I called Secretary of State. He said, "If it does not say Secretary of State on there, it is not a legal map." So, we're trying to get this straightened up, 'cause out here, these apartments behind the doctor's office, uh, according to our map, the city limits go straight through your parking lot. The front half is in city limits, the back half is in, is out of city limits.
But all that has to be surveyed.
I'm gonna keep it all at one time.
Right. It all...
But then we would have to go out and get permission from people. Uh, like I said, that's what I told Joanne. She's got de-started as soon as she get a chance, and want to go out to Poppies, Library, start working.
Well, the library won't say that, for sure.
But Poppies, we already told me he wants it.
Yeah, I haven't been able to catch him to get face to face yes or no, uh, and I'm not gonna be at seven thirty in the morning, Jim. But, uh, you know, we're trying to get this straightened up, so there's gonna be a lot of mess with surveying. So, there'll be some big costs for surveying. The more we want surveyed, the more it's gonna cost us.
Right. That's the other thing.
Which Poppies and Library may be new enough that their surveys may work. I don't know. Probably we'll just have to cross that bridge when we come to it. I just know, they said the de-surveys had, had, uh, expired, and they need to do surveys.
Well, that's all I was, yeah, just...
I'm trying to get this one guy. If he don't contact me back now, I'm gonna consider us tried something else. Is there anything else on the annexation, any questions? Mr. Green made most to adjourn, uh, your second. You're fully, all in favor? Thank you, gentlemen, leave me there, man.